Thank you everyone for coming. We're so excited that Dave's finally here. Our candidates must be exhausted today. And we've seen you in the paper every day, it seems like at a time. So thank you so much for being able to come here. Really excited to hear from all of you. Special thanks to Adeko and Shirley Martin Smith, our event partner. Thank you for all you do for Shirley. And then this is Lance Mullin. And Vinco is gracious to you, our timekeeper. Thank you Lance for doing this. And you. Thanks to all my colleagues, Bonnie Lowe, our president and CEO. Thank you. I'm Eddie Guy, I'm here with the chamber. We're so glad you're here. Special welcome to the class of leadership, Lawrence, who's joining us this morning. Thank you so much for being here. We're about to get started and Anne Gardner is our moderator. And most of you know Anne, she's a longtime editorial editor, former editorial editor of the Journal World. My former boss, and I can testify as you break hands with her. And she has moderated about 25 of these in the past. So they were very good hands. Anne will kind of explain the game plan. Thank you again. Talk to you soon. Thanks. Okay, just making sure the mic is on. It has been a while since I've done these. And I was telling everybody, I hope my muscle memory comes back. So hopefully we'll have a good showing. Before we get going, I wanted to call everybody's attention to these maps that are on your tables. Because I know it's not confusing this year about who's in what district since I was in the Bronx. So if you have any questions about what district you're in, that map is there for you. We're really happy to be here with all our 10 candidates for the county commission. I'd like to thank all of them for being here and being willing to take on this task of public service as well as the preliminary forms and everything that I'm sure have been kind of a commitment in the last few weeks. Just so everybody knows the ground rules, each of our candidates will be asked three questions that have been prepared with vans. The questions have not been shared with the candidates, but the topic should come as most surprised at any of them. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to answer each question and our timekeeper will hold up cards so that I know when time is running out. I'll rotate the order of responses so that no one will be consistently answering first or asked for different questions. And then each candidate also will have 30 seconds for closing remarks if you need them. To preserve time, we're not going to do opening statements, but we've asked each candidate to introduce themselves in about 10 to 15 seconds before the first question. And we're going to start at this end with Brad Chen. Oh yeah, you guys are going to have to pass mics. Thank you.
Good morning. I want to thank the chamber for the subcommittee. Appreciate it. Appreciate all your time. My name is Brad Chen. I live in District 2. I'm a local business owner and father of four. And my impetus for running is I had some neighbors and friends that were being pressured by the kind of the tax burden and I wanted to help them out.
Shannon.
Hi, good morning, everybody. Excuse me. Thanks for having us. I do like an early morning, so it's nice to see everybody fresh eyes. My name is Shannon Reed. I am your current District 2 County Commissioner. I was elected in 2020. I do social service work in the community. I work at the Royal Domestic Violence Center and have since 2013, other nonprofits before that. So doing direct advocacy and navigating local systems is really what brought me to county commission.
I'm Karen Durbin. I have lived here in Lawrence and running in District 3. I've lived here in Lawrence for 40 years. I came to KU in 1983 from the East Coast and never left. And my husband and I, we have five adult children. We have, our 10th grandchild was born yesterday afternoon. And I haven't been to the hospital yet, so that's where I'm heading right after this. But I was a Leadership Lawrence participant many years ago, around 2001. And I've worked really full-time at Morning Star Church. We started that church back in 1992. And so we've been involved through that all across the community for all these years in many different areas. So I decided to run, I think for a lot of the reasons other people have, just the cost in Douglas County has become burdensome.
Hello, I'm County Commission Chair Karen Willey. I've been in Lawrence for 30 years. And in that time, I've worked as a scientist, I've built houses, I've kind of successful for the manufacturing business, and I've served on over a dozen community boards. And I've also been on Leadership Lawrence grad, and have lots of county money. So my main motivation is to be a collaborative problem solver.
Hello, my name is Tim Bruce. I'm in the commercial construction business for 25 years. Got born and raised here in Douglas County. Spent about three years in Texas, but I've lived my whole life here. This is home. So similar to what other people would have said, the reason I'm running is just to kind of help with the tax burden, because I myself considered moving just because of what it costs to live here. So I thought, well, I probably ought to do something, try to do something about it before I just give up, because this is home.
You probably need to get that mic back up here.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Gene Dorsey. I'm a retired financial controller. I've lived in Lawrence since 2005. I grew up in Gardner, went to KU, moved away for 35 years, even lived in Saudi Arabia for five and a half years. I've been attending county commission meetings since 2016 and have been interested in that work for a while. So my last run at elective office was for student council president. So I did have that option. So thanks for coming.
I'm Steve Jacob. I've lived in District 4 since 2001. I've worked for the city for 34 years. I need to retire in two months. And I have to take the day off to be here, so thank you.
My name is Erica Anderson. My background is in healthcare and healthcare policy. I spent the last 15 years really focused on veteran suicides, working with community-based organizations to co-create interventions, really focused on social determinants of health, to address health-related social needs, and to reduce veteran suicides. I've worked with many national organizations as well, to include across the Kansas City Metro area, to really co-create those interventions to ensure that we are improving healthcare access. And I'm running because I care about my community. I've lived here for over 40 years. And I want to ensure that we build a framework that is sustainable and is equitable and can really drive progress as we move forward.
Hi, Friday, good morning. My name is Kirsten. I've lived here since 2012, also went to KU and never left, unless it's word for a lot of us. I just work as an independent contractor because I really focus on civic engagement and I need to be flexible to do that. I'm in my second term on the Board of National Government Board. I also serve on a couple of subcommittees for the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. And I'm really, ever since the G-11 campaign, a bit of a governing gadfly. So here that we have a new district, I thought it'd be a great time to kind of give it a shot, maybe step with civic activism a little bit more. But thank you all.
Hello, my name is Rich Lorenzo. I've been in Douglas County now for 30 years. I came from Miami, Florida to go to KU Law and got my MBA as well. I'm married, 21 years, five children. I live in rural Douglas County, actually in Longwood Township. And I'm currently the president of a local nonprofit, but I have started two businesses here in Douglas County, sold those, and went into the nonprofit realm about eight years ago. So I'm excited about this opportunity and look forward to the questions today.
Okay, thank you. Our first question, we'll come back to Brad and just go straight down to the first round and then we'll kind of rotate after that. If there's a question about taxes, a recent reduction in the county's mill levy will reduce property taxes for some, but may also impact community services. If elected, what would be your plan to balance lower taxes with support of community services?
I think, first of all, I think it's not enough to just adjust. I think it's not just enough to lower the mill levy to reduce a little bit of the burden on the residents when our home value is rising so high. And I think the way to combat that would be to expand the commercial tax base by volume. So if we can lower the commercial tax, commercial property tax, and invite more businesses, we can grow the tax base by volume instead of by dollars per taxpayer. I think it's pretty about that simple.
Thanks, Shannon. I appreciate the question. So for the past, my first term, every budget cycle for me has been about looking at opportunities to reduce the harm and the burden that I know folks are experiencing because of those historic property valuations. And those property valuations are historic across the entire country. It is not unique to our community. Lots of things impacted it, but we had two years in a row where those property evaluations spiked and people saw it and people felt it. Each of those years and in addition to this year, the county commission has worked diligently to roll back the mill levy somewhat in order to reduce the harm, but without sacrificing services. Because the services that the county has invested in and is looking to continue investing in as we grow, especially our behavioral health and crisis intervention services, support of housing services, those investments are really critical in our community. And so I've been proud to strike a balance and know that there are some things that we have to say no, not yet to, and wait for a more fully developed idea or a different budget scenario in future year, but to still be able to make critical investments while rolling the mill levy back. And I've been really proud that we've been able to do that. And also, I think it puts us in a position moving forward that we can be decisive about what investments are critical and imminent and which ones need a little bit more time. And that's the balance of a county commissioner, is determining how to hold both truths at once.
I would say just a little bit in response to what Shannon said, I was at a city commission meeting last night and that there's a general feeling in the city and the county that among the people in elected office that we're doing an amazing job and we're really proud of ourselves. As a person running for office that is a citizen and talking to citizens for six months now door-to-door, I would like to just say that that is not how people feel, that I talk to. And that's not how I feel. So I look at what has happened, 2017, our budget was 89 million and we're up over $200 million now. And I would like to understand why. Where has all that been spent? It's not just in services, it's not just that. We just decreased the mill levy here and, you know, it was kind of touted as historic, but what they've just done to decrease the mill levy, like in Johnson County and DeSoto, that sounds a little more historic to me, what they've managed to do. So I would say the obvious question is to ask another question. What might need to change in Douglas County for us to grow and expand the tax base? What are some things that we need to do differently here to do that in order for that to happen?
So we have rolled back the mill levy, the two years, the two budget cycles that I've been here, certainly for two years. And it has not happened to this degree in the history of Douglas County. I think it's a necessary response to the increasing valuations. Other taxing entities have not done that, but it's been very important to me to be absolutely responsible with Douglas County tax dollars. One of the things that I push for with our partners, which is where many of our services come from, would be rate of funding. So if county dollars are this portion, how are we leveraging that for other dollars, private, public, coming from outside of the community, to make sure that we're pulling our weight, we're not pulling the whole weight. Definitely, we need to expand our commercial and industrial tax base. We need to expand and diversify our economy overall. That will help relieve some of the burden on homeowners and on homes. So we... Here are my notes. This work, the chamber has focused a lot on housing as one of the issues, and that's absolutely necessary, that commercial and industrial will really help to boost our economy. We have some in DeSoto do that. We don't have a Panasonic as an option, but as a community, we have to learn to say yes to businesses.
I think you're going to hear a lot of the same reasons we're here, which is to diversify the tax base and that's all, that's all that you must want, right? Come on and lower our taxes and make it a better place to live. So how do we balance that? I think you've got to have that information in front of you and make the best decisions you can. I mean, we start with public safety and public works, you know, those things are essential. And we move into our additional services and trying to make all that work. For me, if we're, if our valuations are going up and we're lowering the mill levy, in theory, the amount of money we're taking in is not necessarily changing. So we shouldn't be compromising any services. What we're doing is holding things at a rate that the citizens can afford, so, or hopefully that's the thing.
Yeah, I've said in campaigning, talking to people, the taxes are a main topic of conversation. And as I look around this room, I think everybody in this room can afford to pay their property taxes and could probably even afford to pay a little more property tax. But there's a segment of District 4 where we have elderly folks living in houses that are paid off on fixed incomes, sometimes on a social security, and for them, it's a burden. Last week, the county approved a pilot program to try and refund these folks about $300 on their tax bills, which I think is a great idea. Unfortunately, Johnson County tried the same thing and had 40 to 50 people apply. So we've got to get the word out and try and help these folks. And then on the other side of things, we need to control costs and only spend what needs to be spent in a prudent way. Thanks.
I will, I will not vote for a budget that's not revenue neutral. So that will significantly go for the bill. And as far as funding social service programs, there won't be a lot. This county commission has proven they would rather give it to building a courthouse than giving it to people that actually need it. So in general, we just need, you cut the mill levy, doesn't feel like taxes have been cut, absolutely not. And we just need to stop giving corporations and individuals large tax cuts for buildings. The entitlements and the welfare for rich has to stop.
Anne, I really see your question is focusing on sustainability and capacity building for our community-based organizations across Douglas County. So when we think about the actual mill levy being cut, and we know that those community-based organizations are probably going to see a cut to their budgets as well, we need to really sit down with those community-based organizations and have a concerted conversation about what their needs and their challenges really are. What are their current funds that they're actually putting in? What are those grants that are actually funding those objectives and initiatives? How can we, as some of our other colleagues have stated, blend and braid those funding mechanisms to ensure that they are integrated across the entire county? And then we should also be looking at other grants, that we can also support those CBOs to ensure that we are bringing in more dollars to our county, dollars that are already readily available that other counties and or other states are already going after. We should also take a look at diversifying as well and ensuring that we're bringing in commercial entities to decrease our tax base. But we also have to bring back civility and kindness, back to our forums and to our conversations in our commission meetings. As I look at the news and I see the media, I'm hearing more than anything when it comes to economic prosperity across Douglas County, that there are individuals that may not want to come here to thrive economic prosperity because potentially the way that individuals are treating each other in these forums. So we've got to get back to treating each other with respect and dignity.
Pardon me. I would like to start just by pushing back a little bit on a previous statement regarding the property taxes and the ability to pay. It may be the case that many people in this room are not struggling with theirs, but I can tell you that my partner and I are. With our recent valuation, our house is more than doubled since we bought it in 2019 and we are not making that much money. It is a huge problem. The cuts are enough. We need more tax cuts and unfortunately, that will impact services. And I do say this, as the president and founder of a local nonprofit, we need to be looking at having voluntary private support of organizations. Our government cannot do 100% of the things that our citizens want done. Resources are finite, whether folks want to admit it or not. We need to look at really hard at what we can do to cut. I also support a revenue control budget, but I don't think, I have not seen personally that our county has cut enough and we're going to have to have hard discussions about that. We need to look at, I will say, I was looking over the EDC documentation in preparation for this. I love to see that you guys have, what was it, $80 million in private support and only 11 in public. I think that shows that our private industry groups, our private folks are willing to step up to help their community members. It goes a lot farther than when you lose all this weight and then the bureaucratic load and, you know, you're losing everything and all those levels together. If we do it directly, we get more money with people, we need it, and I'll grab it. Thank you.
We are competitive, obviously. We saw just now what happened in DeSoto yesterday. We're not competitive and if we don't lower taxes substantially in this next budget, we all, we all should be fired. There's pain in the streets. I mean, I've locked, I've hit so many doors and this is the issue of this campaign. People are in pain. Property taxes are oppressive for many people and I don't think they, I don't think they need to be. And here's what else, I'll tell you about this. A retired executive has been analyzing the county commission budget. And the county commission for the last four, at least four years, maybe longer, has been over-budgeting, okay, under-spending, and they've been using that money. They have a policy, they like to pay for cash for projects. That's great. I love that policy. But what they've been doing to you is over-taxing you. And now that all this extra money that they've, since they've under-budgeted $10, $15 million here, they're going to use for that traditional law enforcement center and the public safety building. And guess what? They didn't go to a vote. They didn't take it to a vote. They muscled your voice. They don't want you to have a vote. They want to vote on it. A $75 million to $100 million projects, they want to vote on, they want to do this. And that is not okay. They should have told us ahead of time. And they did it because the police facility got voted down, because the jail got voted down. That's why they're doing this. And that is not right. They should have told us, hey, we want a city over the next three or four years, so your taxes are going to be a little bit higher. What will we, what will we have done? I don't know. But we should take it to a vote and determine whether the judicial law enforcement center and the public safety building should be done.
Okay, thank you very much. And for our second question, we're going to go back to District 3 and start with Karen this time. And this question is about alternative energy. How would you help the county meet current and future demands for alternative sources of energy while also addressing public concerns and being responsible stewards of the land?
So my background in soil science has been of help in kind of evaluating the regulations that we put together as a county, our solar regulations, which came out a couple of years ago, are the most forward-thinking in the nation. They're actually a model that others are using specifically to tackle biodiversity and soil health at the same time as generating electricity and not having the massive kinds of erosion we were seeing in the southeast part of the country when they were rolling those out to be in with. As far as how much energy gets produced here and what kind, is a conversation that I think is still ongoing in the community. There, we have regulations around wind, even the proponents of wind statewide are curious why Douglas County was being looked at for that. Our resources are different and our population density is more. As far as putting solar on farm ground, which is always kind of one of the issues that we hear about, it was specifically to limit erosion and to heal that land from some of the commercial practices that are there now, to be able to possibly produce food, definitely produce pollinators, and to do the best by the land while also producing electricity. We have a coal plant, it's here for a while, we have an increasing energy need. If we want to have a community conversation about what it would take to move fully away from coal, then we're going to have to step up for that.
Okay, and then back to Pam, please.
So we have a beautiful landscape in Douglas County and rich soils, some of the best in the world. And I'm in favor of protecting them from the utility scale projects that have been proposed. So for six months and walking door-to-door and talking to people about this issue and talking to people in the county, I would say that when this topic comes up, people tell me that they're in favor of solar anywhere but in the soils, on rooftops and parking lots, anywhere, you know. So I agree with that. That's my view. But, you know, beyond that, this job here is about representation. That's what this is about. And so it's to represent the people in District 3 and what they want. That's, that's how I am approaching this. So I've watched the way, over the last few years, the way the rural Douglas County citizens who have no real representation, it seems like, on this commission or in the City of Lawrence commission, organized to make their voices heard regarding the wind and the solar regulations. And when the solar regs came down, it, you know, prompted a lawsuit from, you know, Grant Township and farmers and businesses there. And, you know, one of the commissioners has been named in that. So I just don't think you should have to take that much energy to feel like your views and what you want are being represented by your elected officials.
Okay, we'll move to District 4 and start with Gene on this answer.
Repeat the question, please.
Yeah. How would you help the county meet current and future demands for alternative sources of energy while also addressing public concerns and being responsible stewards of the land?
That's going to be a tough job, I think. We have two projects currently under consideration in Douglas County. We've got the one just north of Lawrence and then we've got the West Gardner Solar Project. Each one is about 1,000 acres. The complaint with the Northern Lawrence project is it was placed on prime grade one and grade two soils. I haven't heard anything about the West Gardner project, but I am familiar with that area and that's currently also farmland. I agree a lot to be done in the city and all around the county in putting solar on rooftops, parking lots, and so forth. I used to drive to Gardner, my hometown, and I would see signs on all the farmer's mailboxes, no solar, no wind. Lately, I haven't seen that many signs up, so maybe their position has changed. But it's, it's going to be a tough thing to balance the needs and we need to also be concerned about not having data centers and Bitcoin mining in the county because others could use all of the power that would be produced by the current solar projects.
Yeah, let's go next to Stephen. Thank you.
Basically, we need as much power source as we can. We live in a world where Microsoft now owns a nuclear power plant. Every nuclear power plant that's not even open is going to be opened now by corporations. I wouldn't be surprised if the dam we have here is going to get sold to some corporation. So we need, we need all the power we can get because we need more and more power, even Panasonic. So I'm in favor of the wind and solar projects. It's your land, do whatever you want with it. We seem to forget that. If you can tell your neighbor what they can do with their land, your neighbor can tell you what to do with yours. I don't think you would appreciate that very much.
Yeah, back to Tim. Thank you.
Energy is always going to be the thing in the world we live in. For me, the county has spent a lot of time and energy over the decades to keep rural Douglas County rural and keep that ag population growing. For me, I don't know that the wind and solar has a home here, but I just haven't seen a project that I can get behind. So I don't know what the answer is, but I know that most of the folks that I've talked to in rural Douglas County are not supportive of that here. We know we have a need, we don't know what the answer is, but adding, adding all those devices to our landscape, I don't think is the direction we want to go.
Okay, we'll move down to District 5 now and start with Kirsten.
All right. Well, it's really nice. I would start by saying that I do care deeply about the environment and that's going to be very relevant when I follow it up with, but private property rights are fair enough. I do keep bees, I grow apples, my little farmstead is absolutely organic, but I do not believe it's the government's business to tell me whether it should be or not. Similarly, I would argue that our regulations go too far. If you own property, you want to put solar panels up, the government should not be telling you how, when, and why you should. Now, you absolutely should have native grasses and support pollinators, that's something you ought to do, but the government should not be telling you what you can you ought to do, but the government should not be telling you what you can and can't do. This energy issue is very complex and we need to allow individuals and to an extent businesses to be able to respond in ways that they, you know, they think are gonna be good and they think they'll work out, some things might work out. This is a marketplace of ideas and we have to try a bunch of things because this is a very complex issue. But I am mostly in favor of solar, I just personally don't think that the wind, the scale of the wind projects, the environmental impacts and the lubrication requirements, I don't really think it's actually as green as we even wanna talk about it. But for me, it comes back to private property rights. It's something we need to focus on, we need to let people do what they want.
Yeah, go to Rich. You guys, you're catching on to this rotation.
You know, this is not a topic that I'm hearing at the door at all. Actually, I've gone over a thousand doors and one door, they've asked me about, hey, what are we doing about energy sources? So people are not thinking about this because pain on the ground is, I need to support my family with utilities, food, taxes, all the things. And so I personally am not a fan of the industrial wind and solar. I think especially on the richest, some of the richest soil in the state of Kansas, does not make sense. But you know what? I'm a fan of, I'm a fan of people in Douglas County that are creative, that are gonna come up with resources. The, you know, you can think about it, we have so many, we have experts, we have people that have studied these issues, let's talk to them. Wind and solar wouldn't even be a thing if our federal government wasn't incentivizing this stuff. I mean, it's not, it's not environmentally friendly, it's not. And so ultimately, I think we need to tap into the resources, human resources that we have in this county and say, hey, what kind of, what kind of ideas do we have to bring more energy to our community? I'm not an expert in every topic. I might be in finance and finance, when we, when I started my business, my gold and silver business during 2007, people were struggling and they were worried about the stock market. We created a way to democratize gold and silver. We came up with an idea, hey, let's make it for the, for the common average Joe, fifteen dollars a month, fifty dollars a month, a hundred dollars a month, investing in gold and silver to protect themselves during the 2007 real estate, 2008 crisis. We created solutions and that's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna talk to humans in our community who are experts in this area.
And finish up with her.
Wind and solar regulations is also not on Real House, but policy is. And so when we take a look at advocating for the needs of our county, we really need to have more community conversations. We need to bring our community back to the table and discuss what our energy needs are. We need to determine from our commercial entities what they're willing to do. Should we be putting solar panels on some of our properties? Should we be taking a look at some of our codes and ensuring that any new infrastructure has solar panels on it? Let's have those conversations. We should definitely be going back to the legislature and taking a look at our net metering and that particular regulation and contract with Evergy. At my home, I have fifteen acres in rural Douglas County, we have forty-two solar panels on our shop. So I know very well that the net metering policy does not pay the resident back, but if we want to build adoption for green energy, then we actually have to have policies and we actually have to have opportunities for residents to actually see the benefit, to see the shared value and not just have entities and preparations that are actually receiving the benefit to their own pocketbook and for their shareholders. Because we can all benefit if we come back to the table and have further conversations.
Okay, thank you. We're ready for our third question and we'll go back to District Four and start with Stephen , just so you've been, or sorry.
We didn't know that.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you. I knew I was gonna screw that up. It's a, it's a star vision.
Thanks, Anne. I appreciate this question and I think I just wanted to sort of lay some, some facts on the ground and that is that our solar and wind regulations in Douglas County were completely a public process, they were a long process and I believe that they were really robust. And so particularly with the solar regulations, which did not exist both for, whereas with the wind regulations, that was an amendment process, those wind regulations had been in existence for a long time, but didn't account for utility scale projects and we were hearing that there was some speculation about those projects, so we wanted to make sure that regulations were up to par. But with solar, that was really in responsiveness to community members who were both interested in solar sites on their property and working with energy companies to develop them and by hearing from residents, directly in my district, especially in the southeast portion of District Two as it stands currently, that had concerns and a lot of questions. So that process, as questioner really mentioned, led us to regulations that are incredibly robust and they have an amazing amount of mitigation efforts so that we can balance both the benefits and the risks potentially. And one thing I'll say is the thing about commercial scale utility, not only is it an answer to renewable energy, it's an answer to our climate crisis and I believe that all communities have a responsibility in figuring out how to produce some of their own energy. It also will bring a commercial tax base to our community in a very low impact way that land stays agricultural, it does not change, it does not become industrial land, it's not a rezoning. So there are a lot of nuances to it and I think that there are a lot of benefits, but it is our job to weigh both benefits and risks. Each project has its own limits. I'll start with Jean.
Part of District Two includes North Florence and going door to door over this, getting signatures to get on about it and campaigning. People in, unlike District Five, a lot of people in my district are very concerned with the site location of the solar farm. They're worried about it exacerbating the flooding in North Florence and if anybody lives in North Florence, you know that it still floods. We experienced a catastrophic flood in nineteen ninety-three. There was a study that the county paid for that, of the stormwater drainage, that said we needed three pumps to pump the water back into the river. Those, we only got two out of the three. North Florence has never been made whole according to that study. And I don't think enough talk has been done about reducing our energy load and everything is talking about more power, more power. This August, the commission moved to amend the text in land use regulations to allow for perhaps data collection centers and cryptocurrency mining operations, which are huge consumers of energy and again targeting District Two and North Florence and we haven't even been made whole on the stormwater drainage, as it is.
Thank you. Now, can I just correct the record? That was actually the City of Florence, stormwater study in the City of Florence infrastructure, not the county, just wanna correct that. Okay, all right, all right. Thank you very much, I'm sorry, I was giving you. Now, we will go to our third question, we'll start with Stephen on this one, okay? This one, question is about affordable housing and homelessness. What would your priorities be to address affordable housing, homelessness and related issues?
While the city commission last night, anyway, start has been doing more rezoning to make, to build more affordable housing, which I talked about in my campaign for twenty twenty-two, so we're going into the right direction. As far as the homeless, I, I, we are, we are LFK, we are Douglas County, we're not boarding, we're not shipping them off like everybody else does. We outpay hard and that costs money and we have, we have the money. We can do, we can stop these tightnesses from rich and give it to them and help out. We can, they doesn't want, they doesn't, the homeless just want to survive, like we all do. So I'm, just in general, there's a lot of hatred towards the homeless and, you know, it doesn't take much for any of us to become homeless. So we need to care more, we need to find housing for them if they want to. We need to stop being bullies.
Okay, let's go back to Jim, next one.
For me, I think the affordable housing and homeless thing should be handled by the cities in the county and the county should be here to help and assist, not necessarily solve the problem. I'd like to see the cities come to the county with a plan and what they need to help. The city has its own commission, its own management, its own authority. I don't think that's necessarily the county's place to get into the middle of that, so. Happy to help, I think it's important that we help, but I don't know that it's our place to dictate what they do and when they do it and how they do it.
There's nine townships in Douglas County and for the most part, all of the homelessness is in Florence, the city of Florence. So it is more of an urban problem than a rural problem. The county has been helping the homeless situation through social services and I think that's where we should continue to help. As far as building housing, the cities need to get on it and build affordable housing. One thing I will say, the empty church at the south end of South Park, there's a capital project for the county to spend four million dollars to renovate that into offices for county employees. Seems to me that structure should be torn down and a multi-level housing mixed use development should be put in there, which would generate enough tax revenue to lease office space for county employees anywhere you wanted them in the county of Douglas. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Let's skip down to the end and start with Rich in District Five.
You know, the interesting thing is people will tell you a lot of their doors and this, this issue of the homeless is actually, after property taxes, this is the next highest in the City of Florence and in Baldwin, they don't wanna talk, they're not talking about homeless, but here, that's, that's the second issue that I hear about most. And what people are telling me, it's not what's in the paper, actually they're telling me they want accountability for the money that's being spent. They have compassion and they're willing to help, but they want accountability with all the funds that are being used to, for the homeless. And then, you know, I had an opportunity to meet with the Douglas County Shelter, James Chisholm, the director there, and they're doing a good job down there. They're doing a really good job, it's not filled, the county, the community shelter's not filled, but he got here in January, he said people were doing meth on the beds, people were scared to go and stay there. Now they're not. And I think that that's a great resource that we have and we should encourage people to use that resource, it's not full. Anything on the affordable housing issue, we gotta increase supply. I mean, we have, it's like defy a thousand cuts working with the county and this is what people have told me, I'm, I'm, a lot of builders in South Lawrence area, they have told me, it is so difficult to get stuff done at the county. I mean, it is, it's so oppressive at some, at some level and they're all building in Olathe, they're building in DeSoto, they're, they've left, they've left, they don't wanna work with Douglas County. And that, that's sad, that's sad. And so I think we have to resupply, open up land, let the builders do their job, do what they're good at, again, using the people resources we have.
Okay, Erica, please.
When it comes to homelessness and affordable housing, I think we still have a lot of work that we need to do. I also agree with many of the colleagues that have already spoken that the county commissioner's role is really as a collaborator and to be a partner at the table. The cities do need to come to the county commission with a plan. What are the plans to address affordable housing and homelessness in your particular areas? We do know that in Lawrence is where the majority of our homeless population currently resides. As I've been going door to door in Lawrence, I'm also hearing homelessness and safety is a primary concern. So how do we partner better with our local police, with our firefighters to really mitigate some of those concerns? How do we partner better with our economic development partners, with our commercial entities to ensure that we are creating opportunities for affordable housing? But also, how do we partner better with our community members and our residents to understand what type of housing that they actually want to see? We can't just walk in and say that we have all the answers, because we don't have all the answers. We must truly listen and learn and co-create together. If we don't listen and learn, if we just develop something without community input, we will continue to operate in silos without stability and kindness.
Okay, we're gonna go back to District Two and, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, I, 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 I hope.
I have a question.
I wasn't ready.
Well, it looks sounding a little bit redundant, it is the government's fault in terms of the housing. Our regulations, our licensing, our fees, our zoning, our land use codes, this all prevents building. It's how we got into this jam, our policies put us here. And now, the homelessness issue is not solely related to the housing, there are a lot of factors that go into why someone may be unhoused. Mental health is a deep concern and we need to keep funding, supporting, working on that. Burton Ash is doing a great job, we look forward to the youth crisis, we'll plug there or something. But generally, we need to look at reeling those back. That has been hamstringing us for decades at this point. And while yes, there might be a variety of housing needs, I believe that we need that to the free market, the builders do know what they, what they can do if we let them do it. And so we need to look at that first, roll all this back, give people the room and the space to build and that will alleviate some of the concerns. Although I will also agree with some other folks that this unhoused issue does seem to be primarily located in Lawrence and Lawrence likes to do big projects and then come to the county and make us help them pay for it. And I think that this body needs to do a better job of focusing on, is this really something that is primarily Lawrence issue? Should we be making rural ballwood citizens pay for something if they never venture into Lawrence? These are complex issues, I'm sure I'm not gonna let any friend say it, but it is the truth that we need to make changes.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll go back to your break.
I agree a lot with what everybody in District Five has said about the housing issue. As far as the homeless, I've been speaking with professionals and volunteers who are in it with the situations and processes surrounding individuals and families experiencing homelessness and a concern that has been relayed to me that we're losing people in between the agencies. When someone gets to be transferred from one agency to another, they're given contact information before leaving, but many do not follow through and do not show that up. And I think we could streamline this process and make it more efficient. A solution has been proposed to perhaps create a hub that houses all the community partners that provide services within housing, just workforce, appropriation, mental health, medical, substance abuse treatment and more. Perhaps they kind of could help facilitate the creation of this hub, share this funding and even provide a sit location. The city and county have implemented many plans and policies, it's important that we are getting transparent and accurate data so citizens can see for themselves the successes or failures of said policies in real time and to be able to continually monitor those and the efforts that they've paid for.
So homelessness and housing, there's a whole lot of issues that go into it, as many folks up here have mentioned, it's a nuanced and complicated issue and no person's story is the same as the next person's story, both in terms of what brought them to being an unhoused individual in our community and in terms of the types of barriers that they face in becoming housed again and stately housed. So what I've been really focused on as a commissioner and what I, what really drives me to wanna continue being a commissioner is, is the need for all of our organizations and our local governments to be working together collaboratively. So I've heard some comments that this really is just a City of Florence issue, I'm here to tell you that it is not. Of course, it is most visible in the densest population in Lawrence, Lawrence is nine percent of Douglas County's population, that makes sense, that's true in any community. But we do have incidents of rural homelessness and homelessness that may not be so visible to you in other parts of the county, including at lakes and campgrounds and it also looks like invisible homelessness and people couch surfing and doubling up in homes because of affordability. So there are a lot of issues that go into it, but I, I am wholeheartedly able to believe that we all have to work together and figure out what we bring to the table. That includes private businesses, that includes all of our governments, city and county. It was mentioned that county government is particularly invested in crisis services and social services and that's a huge piece of the puzzle. We are also invested in support housing. Thank you.
Okay, Pam?
So if the homelessness was just about putting money towards it, it would have been solved by now, that's, I mean, given. So I, I think to start with, the city and the county should acknowledge that they created many of the problems that we're facing right now currently with regards to homelessness and affordable housing. I went to two of the listening sessions two years ago and it's clear to everyone that attended those, that the city had stopped enforcing some laws and it drew people here. So I've lived in Douglas County forty years and we've always been addressing homelessness here, you know, family, we've always been addressing these issues and we used to do it through collaboration and cooperation and local leadership and I, I'm not sure that that's what, how we're, what's driving it now. So we used to build two hundred and fifty homes a year, we used to have much lower property taxes, we used to enforce laws. So I believe paradoxically, it's become a bigger and more expensive problem ever since Douglas County and the city of Florence got, got involved to helping solve it. So I think our county, it's been said, you know, it's full of generous people who, you know, we have caring people here, it's a strength we can build on, but we need to consider that. But we need to consider that value can look different by, you know, caring can look differently than just taking enormous amounts of tax money and administering our care through local government.
So the division of labor between the city and the county on housing and homelessness is generally that the city is taking responsibility for emergency shelter on the front end and permanent housing stock on the back end. Most housing needs to occur within cities, so some of the questions about regulation and building, I'm aiming for that conversation, and that is a city conversation that we will not have a lot of influence over. Douglas County works in that supportive housing role. So we funded a lot of social services since 1866. This is one counties have been involved in, including mental health, addiction, keeping, keeping people housed in the first place so that we know that we're managing issues for folks that have a tie to Florence and a tie to the tax dollars that are supporting them. We have a landlord program where Douglas County will actually, through the housing authority, will come alongside landlords to help them house people who aren't here, who just need help getting to a social supports. We've also taken the federal ARPA dollars that were given to cities and counties. We did not use those at the county for operating expenses. We used them for one-time investments in the community, including eight million dollars towards affordable housing. Some of those projects are now beginning. We've been groundbreaking on those, and they're starting to come out of the ground.
Okay. Thank you all for your thoughtful answers to our questions and for making sure that everybody on the panel got to answer every question. I appreciate you keeping track for me. We're ready now to have our thirty-second closing statements by our candidates. And just to kind of mix things up a little bit more hard, we're going to start with Rich on that and then just go straight down the line, okay?
Well, thank you. Right now, thank you. Right now, we are not better off than we were four years ago. Our residents are struggling financially, and we can't continue to ask them to do more. We can't. I hear about the pain they're experiencing at their front door almost evenings. Our downtown is not safe, and the constant turmoil, as they call it, the county, is not attractive to new business and does not foster growth for existing businesses. People are fed up, and I'm fed up. The people in Douglas County want leaders that will fight for them and listen to them. They want leaders that will increase their individual freedoms and restrain government. You know, I've been, I've been a leader for, in this community. I started two successful businesses. I know what it takes to start something from scratch and to grow it.
Thank you all for coming. I will tell you that the one thing you need to know about me is that I will operate on principle. I believe in consent. I believe in freedom. And I believe you know how to run your life better than anybody that's took on this diet can do. And if you made a problem coming out of it, it's made a problem, and I will tell you how it's either created by the government or exacerbated by the government. We need less government in this county than not more.
I stand for integrity and ethics, transparency, and ensuring that we are all at the table when we need to make decisions. It is so important that all levels of influence are actually at the table. And I really stand for bringing, as I said earlier, bringing civility and kindness back to the table and back to our forums, back to our discussions, and ensuring that as a community, we can move forward together.
The first thing I will do on my end, Commissioner, will be call for a vote to get rid of the food sales tanks. The governor's, the governor's going to get rid of it from the state. We need to get rid of it in the county. It is the worst tax on the board imaginable.
There's a lot of things that need to be done at the county level. I'm going to devote full time to the job once I'm elected. Many people treat it as a part-time job, but at forty-nine thousand seven hundred and six dollars a year next year, I think it is full-time salary and devote, I will devote full time to it. Thanks.
Thank you all for coming out here today and listening to us talk. I just want to use my years of construction and bone experience. And, you know, I've been a head of doors and commissioner for nine years. That experience to bring to the county and make it a safer, more cost-effective place to live. I love it here. I want to stay here. And I think there's a lot of people that feel the same way, and I want to help make it a better place to live.
I've got to embrace both the academic knowledge and the business experience to create fact-based and efficient public policy. In my two years in office, I've reduced tiny taxes while keeping our commitments to public safety and crisis care. In the next term, I'll be working to balance protected natural spaces with the need to build new housing and employment centers that expand our tax base. My goal is to build a more vibrant, sustainable, and affordable Douglas County. I'm glad for your vote for District Three.
I don't pretend to be an expert in any of these areas that we've talked about today. I don't think there are really any experts, but I sure have enjoyed, as a citizen myself, listening to other people and hearing what they would like to see happen in Douglas County. And I feel quite confident that the people here have great solutions that come from the bottom up and not the top down, and that a lot of the things that we do face are very solvable if we will listen to the people who lived here who have an investment in living here.
Thanks, everybody, for being here. You know, just yesterday, I was cleaning out my car, and I found I have these dog tags that I got at a camp like work.